This conference will now be recorded.
President. 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 We also have to be with first responders, superior officers, people who are taking care of the disaster, protecting them, also protecting the families. Father, our fellow. Dear citizens and honor, I'm calling for us to give a shout out. I understand. As we have what has been on and like that for anyone's business concern about I cannot like agenda, you'd like to stand and address the council to let us know to make your comments apart of the open director. Stand and state your name and ask that. Anyone? Can you hear me? No one like to address the council about I cannot like agenda? What we want to consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes the Minister, Mr. Light, Wayne Sutton, City Councilman, Flag for City Operations, Flag for Public Health and Authority Operations, Public Interest Request for a Baker's Chair, Massage Service, Rightmove Renewal for Alfa, Massage and Imperial State Department. I entertain the vote.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to consent agenda for second.
Thank you. We both. Okay, man.
The motion is to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mackey?
Yes.
Wood? Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Mayor, the motion pass.
Very good, thank you. On to do business, the first item this evening is public hearing for the 2020 budget amendment and the 2021 budget. Yeah? You want to add anything or do you want to?
I go ahead and open the sheet.
All right. Entertaining a motion to open a public hearing for 2020 budget and the 2021 budget hearing app.
Seven to.
For a minute. There.
We need to vote. Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, can everybody hear?
No.
We're just going to go through our all the things that we presented in the discussion last week. And the council approved the budget summary which set the maximum allowable expenditures and capacity for the fund. And so that's what we require to be ready on later. So what we're just going to go through and may talk about the budget. This is our budget calendar we started back in May with apartment heads and budget managers. That's the budget. And then we worked at the municipal in July on our budget work sessions on the 27th of the budget hearing notice that went in the paper. And tonight we are conducting the budget hearing. And tonight we will decide on the final budget. And that was published and sent to or not published but certified by the county by the 27th. This slide just shows our historical milliaries in 2005, '10, '15, and in our last of '18, '19. And our 2020 milliaries, that's our estimated milliary that was before from the 21 budget. So the milliary we reached out and these are the proposed laws for the different jurisdictions and wind up. So it shows if all of the published milliaries go through the milliary that we're down by 22, well. And this just shows, it shows that the city, the city has, I think, about 20% of the total taxes that citizens pay, 20% goes to and 40% to citizens, majority goes to soldiers. And then 27.3% goes to the college. And then the family, the state, 1.5%. Of the city's taxes, 54% goes to the general fund and 24% for debt service and 12% for no life for the 2021 budget. Goals for 2021 were to maintain our high level of quality services. We made, we, this year was a year like we don't think we've ever really had for our own time. With revenue projections needing to adjust those. We've always had conservative budget or revenue assumptions. And we went back this year and looked at our revenues now at self tax, especially our entertainment venues where we get a lot of our taxes through casino and using taxes and self taxes that we were going to get hit by COVID. So we went and estimated our 2020 tax revenues and lowered those. And then for next year, we lowered them, we lowered about 10% for this year. Next year's budget overall about 3% lower than what we actually thought of in 2020. We tried to balance this year in 2021, our revenues and expenditures for about $200,000 off, which is pretty good given environment. We're continuing to invest in long-term planning and continuous improvement, improve on our CIP program, in our CIP worksheet that we presented. And we'll have funding for 2021 and 2022. And beyond that, you know, we're just going to have to look at our revenue and how that comes in and plan. But for right now, we're able to find our 2021, 2022. And then we also this year or for 2021, going to fund an house that's owed or done. Total 2021 budget for all funds is 29,000. We'll go through the general fund. This shows a picture of our revenues. I think they talked pretty much about the 20, the first column shows the 2020 budget. Second column, 2020 estimate. Like I said, that's about 10% decrease in the estimate from the budget overall. And then the 2021 proposed is about 3% decrease from our 2020 budget. So total projected revenue for 2021 is 8.5 million. Again, a lot of the decreases are due to the COVID shutdown, entertainment, venues, businesses, recreation programs. This shows what percent of our revenues come from different sources. Majority of our revenues in the general fund come from sales and these tax, 31%. Property and tax accounts for 20%. Our reserves that we carried over, that we're estimating carryover from 2021 were 28%. And then we've got franchise fees at 6%, casino at 3%, report, fines and fees at 3%. And this other 1%.
So some of that is probably the most impacted with the virus?
Yeah.
And casino revenue, is that a factor?
No, I mean, I think, trying to think of what we got last month, I think we've got about 40,000. I mean, usually we get like 65, but that was, you know, they're not a whole family. So again, that's.
Yeah, we see that part of the digital.
It's two months behind. So what we received in July was remaining. So I think that was the month they, they opened. Now, I'm not sure. I think April or so we never got it. In June, we didn't get anything. And then in July, we got, I think they opened the meeting.
Seven, seven.
No, that, that's not.
So it's almost.
Yeah. Right now, we were, I would say awarded that much. It still needs to go through. The county is actually hopefully approving that tonight. Then it needs to go to the state by the 15th. So a couple of days and then the state has to certify that the funds that we are speaking are in fact reimbursable. For the purposes of trying to expedite this whole process, a lot of there's two different ways, reimbursement or direct aid. We've just sought reimbursement for payroll expenses, which is eligible. The expense, the hope would be that we still need to come back and prioritize what that funding is going to go towards. There are a lot of things in public safety. There's a lot of things, public works, the equipment that we have around us. There's, there's expenses that we have that we're going to have to find somewhere. So yes, it does probably cover that much, but we still, I think, need to roll through what we need to do to, I guess, balance all the requests that every, all the departments have at this point. Yeah, oh yeah, we've already submitted. No, yeah. Kind of what it, what the cares portion came down to for local governments was that in actuality, no local government under 500,000 people was directly awarded money. If you're reading the Kansas City Star right now, that's going out between the mayor of KCMO and then Jackson County. But the reality is that the money came through the states. The states were basically set up a process to seek reimbursement. That has been a very, very tight window to try to operate in. So again, from the administrative kind of convenience, which is Department of Treasury word that they use, we're just seeking that level for payroll, knowing full well that we, we're going to have a lot of expenses just with COVID-19 related issues that we've run into in the past and what we're probably going to run up to in future. Yeah. Yeah. And that's, and that's been, I think, pretty clear, although some maybe not so clear across the state and county. But payroll is clearly an allowable expense. Treasury makes that clear in their guidance. So that being said, we were able to utilize that way of getting the full money that we should be getting and then allowing us to take a collective breath and then figure out the most effective ways of spending that money to mitigate concerns of COVID-19 in the past and in the future.
And we don't believe that. Well, I mean, I believe that. Sean, his staff asked the questions of the county. Now, we're trying to, how we can do this, what would be allowed? What that would be allowed? And without any direction from them, did their research, did research through the Treasury Department, indicated what was it would be a pilot. He also made sure we have representation on a county committee that would have no transparency for our salary. So I'm very impressed with this and you down and research as being quite favorable. Or so, and that is the charter. Appreciate it, thank you.
And this is just because self tax is our number one revenue source in the general fund. This charter shows our self tax collections in the general fund. We do have 24% sales tax for emergency services and for capital. This just shows the general fund self tax. And the trend since 2017, 2019 was a good year. And then 2020 estimate, again, there's the decrease in revenue to our current situation. And in 2021, we've got a trend that's on, but not to the level of 2014, 2015. Same thing with county, county self tax. Property tax, this just shows our assessed value over the year. We continue to grow in our assessed value this year. Our assessed value went about 5% overall. Wine that came, I think, was up about 6%. Johnson County was down about 10%, but that was mainly due to the estate property that was partially built in that 2020 valuation. And then this year, they were giving higher moves. Somehow they are a little bit of a pilot. So that, the main reason for the Johnson County. This chart in 2018, state limited cities and what they could increase property tax and revenue by, so there's a CPI. And then some exemptions for debt service and public safety. So these are the calculations that we go through to see what we're able to levy without having to vote with the people. Our 2020 budget levy was $3,190,000. The state this year said the CPI was 1.8%. So that gave us an additional $57,000. New improvements and changes in use, they let you capture that property tax, so that gave us another $21,000. So the total increase was CPI and changes in use and new improvement for $79,000. Then we're allowed our debt service fund, milliary revenue increase was about $43,000. So we're able to capture that for debt service. And then our public safety expense, that's been fired, we increased by $37,000. So total tax levy allowable for 2021 without a quota of $3,190, 354, 64. And our levy is $3,190, 354, 62. Yeah, you know that right wing. This is that same chart, it's a little older. This is, this is the calculation that we had to get our levy and with that, I think our milliary is 6.07 million. Expenditures, this just shows 2019 actual, our 2020 budget, 2020 estimate and 2021 proposed. We went through for 2020 and looked at mostly our payroll. That's one of our biggest expenses to see what it's realistically going to be. And that we had a few bigger items like the comp plan was in 2020. We're not going to do that to 2021, so we decreased that. So, so the estimated column is 401 for this year, down from $11,000 to $35,000. A lot of that is that contingency that we budgeted in 2020 of $890,000. We put that down to what we knew we were going to extend with it. And then people think we talked to the council, probably this year about 15 years from now. And the 2021 proposed, yeah, this is a pretty, we went through the budget pretty highly. We don't have any contingency exposure in this budget and no transfer to the capital in front of reserves for this year. So our budget, $897,72,000. And that was so we could get, find a balance of our revenues and expenses. And as mentioned, I think we were 200,000 dollars more in expenses. So finally did that levy and put that on. And with this budget, we're forgetting a 34% carryover reversed from 21 with all revenues. Of the, of the 2021.
General.
General. So 34% of that. This just shows a chart of where the budgeted expenditures down in general fund, majority goes to police, 36%. Couple courts is 16%, fire 14%. The others, those are three biggest pots being 6%. Court four, recreation five. Five one six. So that just shows where, and then we got that new, the story. Water and wastewater funds, budgeted carryover from 2021 to 22 in water is estimated at eight months and wastewater, five months carryover. The utility revenues that we budgeted for 2021 included 8% increase in both funds in January of 2021. So those increases are, those eight months and five months are dependent on that, those rates. And those are based on that current rate study that we did. And we kind of landed in the middle of the recommendation. So, so that's why the increase continues to be higher. We only have one budget amendment this year, and that's in the state community improvement district, the district where West Lake is. And that extra 1% self tax in that district goes to the developer. And those sales taxes are higher than what we budgeted for that just to, for us to have authority to pay it out. Yeah. To it, to increase the spend, we have to, if it, if we needed, I think we budgeted, can't remember what our budget was. But if we know that we're going to, we have to save the developers. So if we know that based on how self taxes are coming in, that we have to pay out, we know that by the end of the year, we're going to go over what we budgeted for prior year or transition budget. Then we've got to do an amendment. And we normally do that at the same time as we do the prior year budget, because you have to have a hearing on it.
It was just decreasing, not paid.
Yeah. It's, 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 it's an expenditure to us because we have to pay it out. So we're, we're just paying out while we're getting it. Hi, that's my presentation. If you have any questions, Sean, do you have anything?
I've heard it all. Not all budget processes. Even in the work time that we've had in a long time, I'm really proud of what 1% amount of our budget that we're having to use from our contingency that is $200,000 and $200,000. I sense that's phenomenal. Thank you all and all the hard work that everybody's done.
So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to stand and speak for the budget or have questions concerning the budget? Speak against the budget or have any question? All right. Sure. And we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm going to take a motion to close the public hearing at 8:19. It's over. Make a motion to both public hearings be 18. Six seconds. All right, get all of the paper. I don't want to oppose. Here we go. Item number two, which is to a 2020 budget amendment to 2021 budget and establish an maximum. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to drop the 2020 budget amendments under 2021 budget. Thank you.
I just wanted to remind everybody that while all other cities are burning down, we're lowering our taxes. It's funny, you said, I think, 2.2 mill or something similar to that. Yeah. Overall, bill levy is dropping for this area, right?
Yeah.
Box is checked there. So it's still going down potentially as long as it falls. I was reading PDF and 120, I pretend the library is holding so steady in their budget, only went up by 100 bucks, but their bill levy also dropped down by almost 3 mil or 0.2 mil. I'm there that I saw. Correct. Yeah.
And we were like, without, with just one piece of arm up and trying to come in, but it's down to the twenty-two five on itself, and some of us.
I don't even do the top top of that. The other one I've missed. Oh, you did a great job. Thank you, guys. Our staff is awesome. The fights are also clean, easy to read, for everybody. Partake the award you guys won, so thanks for that. I just like to remember too, also, I think it's important to note that there wasn't last year that person, prepositioning, continuing, sort of the nature of the project, the black school price, we're supposed to set the first instance of person being able to win this.
Has anyone else?
The motion is to adopt the twenty twenty budget amendments and the twenty twenty-one budget. Wood? Stevens? Mackey?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip? Reeves?
Yes.
Thompson?
Shannon?
Yes.
May the motion pass?
On item number three, you can take your request for the Cedar Waterline project.
Item number one, finding our support director. That would have a question for approval of a couple of change orders. Cedar Waterline project, one of them essentially about eighteen thousand one hundred seventy dollars and twenty cents for the installation of a six-inch gauge valve, second street, and additional four service connection. Change order two, and you have twelve hundred fifty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents, including replacement of five broken tile floors. Total amount of change orders is nineteen thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Maybe record is a few recent contracts. Any questions you may have on this specific project? Where are the ends at?
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve a change order that the total amount of nineteen thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars, ninety-eight cents to Kistick Construction for additional water line repair work.
Second, questions, comments? We'll start around here with the motion.
Heard of you.
We're closing the water, right? You left the water somewhere ago. Well, it said, it never been a habit. But in three years, they had to dig up the area before they found the lead or something.
Yeah, they have a problem now.
Okay. All right. That's what I thought, called someone when it happened.
Just a little bit.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion is to approve the change orders in the total amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents to Kistick Construction for additional water line repair work. Thompson? Stevens?
Yes.
Kip? Shannon?
Yes.
Wood? Gurley? Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All that happened in the end, I was getting.
Thank you all over. On item number four, community share better for big one here.
There are two options here on this item. One, if you make motion to approve Premier Roofing for roofing better in downtown. And the other is to approve the company to hold their place in downtown. This is, Premier is a company that's also working on the private sector, where the top projects, the, 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 the. And the, we've got a downtown, the location, our, 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 but the first item we need to be done at the government downtown, we want to support the ladder up. And all of it to be done, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have a contract, we have, 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 we have. But this was not budgeted for this budget here. But we wouldn't be able to do these pieces in the budget. The budget period would have, uh, budgeted, there would be a period of reduction to one so the carryover to ladder would be thirty-three percent of thirty-one percent if we did on the project performance. We can get it in downtown, the total, this is two thousand dollars. If you were to only do the better downtown, we can do it for seven thousand two hundred grand for this year, and then we did this project next year. That would, at a minimum, support the project up because of having to go regularize through, would increase the cost by at least fifty-nine hundred dollars to support the project up. And then also the chance that it's going to be priced.
Tyler's going to sit here, I'll go again, and ask for what?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Premier Roofing for option one, to be better downtown, not to exceed, you know.
Second, would we be setting this for a start point? Um, for now, fifty-two thousand dollars, please, the membrane for the park, and flat roof for that part, you know? It's, should just be the flat membrane, you know? So the membrane here is maybe, it's like, and then there's the rug in between, the rug on the front, the rug on the back. Flat roof. Flat roof, yeah. And that's a, they, they, like, this is, um, the, 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 based on repairs, uh, after, uh, uh, where it's, they're looking, uh, uh, I know this guy had to go up the theme, or the, or, outside there, and add, uh, the principal role, or the, the, with, uh, you know, I, I, I would say that a lot of the gutter, a lot of the bettering on this building, I'm not sure what the age of it is, but if you've driven around the building, it's, I mean, it probably needed to be replaced some time ago. You've got a few locations over here, in particular, where you can see the erosion, and then you can start to see where the, the issues are forming on the concrete that I've tried to get them ordered, as well. That's one of the issues with older buildings, why you didn't recoup, is that mortar starts to wash away. And then we also have another issue over on this corner here, there's a higher level roof, and then a lower level roof. There's perpetual issues, just water coming in. So again, the viability of the building, if someone had sake, I would say, as far as if you start to have issues with water and the erosion and whatnot, you might as well just say, sign art of the building. And that's somewhat of a strong statement, but I think we're there as far as the issues on that.
This looks like, um, actually, together, again, but it looks like a lot of the, I believe that they worked with the, we were able to talk about, maybe, yeah.
That one, I do, I know it's on this side, and I'm, and I'm here. And then if you didn't do, that was, the, 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 and I would, because. We're going to have to, the only tie-ins that they're doing are along the, what is this, southwest area. Anything else is going to be something that we're going to have to address. I did talk a few months ago, when we started going down this road with Jared Masters, he's our supervisor over facilities parks. We're going to have to come in and backfill a lot of this erosion anyway. So we'll, we'll look at tying in those drain systems at that point in time, because it's, to your point, they're, they're needed for a public fair as well. It's on the radar, absolutely.
All right. And, I mean, I, you should have said what they're, possibly, but it's, I got that, you guys are doing today, and I, I, wait a second, hold on. We got, we got sixteen, I mean, presidential, you know, trust, like, for the governors of, for, I think, like, five, six months worth of, and I know this, the, the, their overall scheme is, and luckily, sure, we're not getting done, this seems like, so, that's you, uh.
I think, just really quick, part of it is that these gutters will tie in with what they're putting down in the nineteen eighteen building, so that might be some of the reason for the difference in cost there, is there a higher grade material? But again, the intent of that is just to try to keep some level of consistency between the two buildings, but we can definitely look into it.
I can really agree with that, Travis. I don't want to see it, they, they, they're building, it clearly, it's, okay? They, we guys, they, you know, they, they, first, they, last, so I'm just here to see the thing, and then some time, I will, the, 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 the. The other question I have would be, three through the, 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 off, off of forty-five to be, hello? And, hey, I'd be impressed, the other thing, they, 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 they. Sean, before you ever forget, I'm talking, they have the, like, the, 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 the.
Yeah. All that's doing right now is conveying the water in lieu of the gutter system that's there, because they, we did have underground drains on the south side of the building, but because of the rerouting of everything there, they actually ripped all that out, and so now it's flowing out to the street. So once the project is all done, whole project, the, the underground drains are already installed, the gutters that we're talking about tonight will go into those underground drains on the south location here, the EDC will be removed. So that's, yeah, K, in KBS will, they put that EDC out, so they're going to be the ones that are going to be taking.
Change order for that, that's going to be approved?
If it, if it does, it would probably come with the recommendation not to approve it, but.
I was just going to, they're always thinking about now, to just take care of what we've got, and, 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 so.
Yeah, that, I appreciate that, but I would think it's exactly, that's a lot of factors, fifty thousand dollars, and it's better, yeah, yeah, when you back together, that's a lot of factors, but really, one thing, that's, that's.
All right.
The motion is to approve Premier Roofing for option one in an amount not to exceed sixty-two thousand dollars. Gurley? Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Wood? Kip? Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just really quickly, we talked about it a little bit during budget conversation, but again, through the process that Wyandotte County devised, the city was awarded about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars out of the CARE Act funding that came to the county via state. Wyandotte County in total was, was provided about three point, or thirty-seven million dollars. So again, we are still working through that process, and hopefully we'll get the money sometime. Also, just wanted to point out, we've talked about this on a few different occasions, but we did just get some preliminary scoring through Mark, Mid-American Regional Council, they do have the STP, and then there's also CMAC, and then Alternative Transportation Program, and all, all these programs that ultimately result in allocation of federal dollars towards transportation projects. Two projects that the city submitted, one of which is one hundred and thirty-eight street, which is a project that we've been working on for some time now. That scored very highly, which is the highest rank that it can have, there's not a lot that are within that, that field. And then also Tiblo Transit, if you recall, is part of the, I'm going to actually forget it for once, the Tri-City Multimodal Redevelopment Plan. There was a conversation about having a multimodal sort of, I just chalked it up to saying a union station, but on a very small scale. This has been something we've been talking about, ultimately, it could be located really anywhere in the core, but we do have available space on the south side of this site where the parking lot, all of that. Again, that was also highly aligned with the Connected AC twenty fifty plan. So again, this is the first step in prioritization for these projects, both of which are in the neighborhood of about three million dollars. For comparison's sake, the Riverview one hundred and tenth project, Edwardsville, is currently pursuing this, that is a project that was part of this process three years ago now. So again, just to kind of give some relevance there. And then lastly, I have reached out to Julianne Van Lu, who is the Wyandotte County Health Department Director. She will actually be in attendance at our next council meeting to give, just similar to what Kathy Briney did a couple of years ago, again, just trying to have some county officials come out here and kind of give a, a good overview of exactly what twenty dollars goes towards, which is obviously a big topic here in Bonner Springs. But obviously, the idea for coming at this juncture with everything going on, I thought was a great opportunity just to have some, again, high-level discussion of what the function is of the health department, and ultimately parlay that into the issues, recovery, so on, with COVID-19. So if you do have any specific questions that you'd like to see addressed, feel free to forward those to me, so I can get those to Julianne, so that she can adequately prepare for that conversation. And with that, that concludes my report.
I have two, two questions. I know this is, this is, it's a lot, it's, we, 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 we.
I think, I realized it on Saturday morning when I called in, sign was gone, so, yeah. So yes, I haven't heard of anything going in there, that's obviously always one of the issues with those types of buildings, is they are built by design for those specific users. So I don't have any update of, of anybody going in there. Uh, so I, I don't have any update of, of anybody going in there.
Their whole purpose is to apply for the CDB program um to help find some of the profits for demolishing. And if, if that doesn't go to even be a part of the. Hopefully we'll be getting through and agree with them soon, so that would be more of a tap. If they go through the CDB process, it would be just to bring it down to a certain place for now and it can't be used for that. And they understand. Unless it is a project that benefits the low water income population of the city. And good enough, our, our low water income rate has raised over the past few years to um what? I guess it's dropped, I guess is what you mean, or that we're at forty five percent. You have to be fifty one percent or above a community to get that type of project going. Um, so we. We were to re-surveying and our, and our alumni. Those are. Um, that's another question. Is there anything happening that you can talk about? Because you know.
Just jump on that. And where the, uh, the. Anton truck. Then we're, that's maybe that part from that. Uh, are they running wood truck now?
And the last comment may move over this be parking lot. We will be doing fortunately at the parking lot. Um, we can call back today.
We are, I can't really, we are looking at the installation of some sign found by Centennial Park. Um, as that has become a free throw stopping area or permanent parking area for most. Um, just to designate some of those areas right next to the park as that part, it's hard to say this, parking, parking only. Uh, so visitor parking only, um, as far as just trying to take care of that.
What I did is people have stayed and they can leave a portion of it as parking and not budget. They can't, they can't redo the parking lot or even reuse the fund to be able to do that. So if they were to be part of this, they can do that. It's a little, it's so tight. We, we talked to the state about putting up some temporary structures if they weren't said. From a stadium or a little, they have to be normal to do that. Uh, somewhere. A last type of thing that we asked. This is all right.
There is there anything significant that the city did? We wanted to raise things in a couple of years ago. They decided a good project from tomorrow. Is there any penalties or do they just have to be paid? There'd be no figures. Took away from them to get some funding or a man afford that to project. Oh, but movement from. Cemetery pond, the uh, where are we on? We need the cemetery pond with the tactile, but a lot of work has been done. But it looks like something that, I don't know if it's solved or if we're moving forward. But.
It's my understanding that since we last talked about this, we have, we have some chemical applications. Although that's gonna take a few weeks before you can see the full results of that.
It looked like there was some new growth coming up through it.
I think it's still a bit, you today have made an application. Then you have to make another application.
That's fine, just.
Yeah, yeah. That's where I came up. It's gonna be all over.
They're living through chemistry. Um, also, uh, the area of Long Road, Lakewood, Silver Hill. There's properties there on the back up to Lakewood on the west side. But just, the property owners have been doing that part. Like first there on the corner of, of Silver Hill and Lakewood. It looks like he's doing good, but then everybody who's down on that looks like not doing too good. And then a little bit on the north side of Lakewood there also. Uh, north side of Metropolitan from Middleton down to Lakewood. A lot of stuff has grown there, looks like it's about three or four foot tall again. Uh, I believe that belongs to the utility says.
And that's up on that though, I would much like.
Actually, it needs to have something.
Yeah.
Somebody needs to call somebody or whatever.
Energy.
Back to the spring, the long, uh, spring, tree. Notice I got that here a few days ago and it's making a big difference. Thanks to you for that. I noticed there is uh the International Order of Odd Fellows at the South Window Lakewood. There's a building there off the right with a tree that's totally fighting. And about half of that fighting looks like it's poison ivy. So not the same there. And I know they're busy, but I'm just pointing these things out. I know they're good people and they're good camp. So, so I think they're doing a good job, not complaining that anybody looks at where we just kind of bring things up that I see. One of the things that I thought was very interesting while many places are deep, let me, we've built, we've been police.
First of all, I hope you have a twenty two thousand time. Then value was very, very high. People kept coming in, but then they had huge questions about that. But that was very good. So that there. And then people who live in Bonner actually showed you earlier. Inside of the twelve. That we agreed on. Please move forward. Yeah. I think he was like.
Uh, staff, we're ready. Thank you all very much. Sean, you missed it, and I appreciate you doing this number seven in community blood drive. Uh, this is very quick, uh churches come together, the message church sets up. They, they're critically behind in this file. And so they're really pushing hard. So I really encourage everybody, however you give the word out to uh look at these blood drive. Very important, they're really behind. So.
All right, yeah, one good, one bad, one good. My good was I was gonna brag on Matt just doing, uh, I went to their, um, I guess it was President Matt's. The, the governor for elderly came down here or whatever he did. He runs a lot of deliveries in like Midwest region, giving Matt a, a award or a commendation for becoming president of the first uh non-colleage associated chapter of the program. So it's thirty five hundred. Um, I thought that's pretty cool that both um just being and Matt stepping up to be that, Matt the president and just being media manager and. Maybe president?
Okay.
Bush president? Yeah. Um, and it was neat to be there with them on that. They had an excellent showing, it was a lot of fun. Uh, the second one was, I was gonna bring up for anybody interested in the mask stuff. We made national news. joking in a non-positive way for uh the reason that uh our Governor Kelly and how we have reinstated the mask wearing. Uh, I think we found that all of that data was actually not exactly false, but they were using some creative graphs to be able to push the mask ordinance further out. Uh, and we actually had a autograph that uh broke down, uh, she's a pharmacy major and all that, broke down all the mask wearing and the graph, reinstated it and put all the numbers up on Facebook. Um, in a proper graph way to show that counties that are not wearing masks have actually decreased in COVID cases and deaths and all that. And all the information that they were pushing to keep masks was actually false. For my. The other portion of that was the data for Wyandotte County or the UG came out for payroll. And their top ten people in their staff, all of them make over a hundred and fifty thousand. So if anybody in Wyandotte County is curious where their taxes are going, a lot of it is exorbitant payroll. Um, Donna Cox is on that, two hundred and twenty four thousand. And this was actually brought up by a citizen, her name is Dana, Dana Croft. And she was saying, she was complaining because he's been in for six years and every year, uh, including last year, this year, and then for the next three years, their budget's supposed to be bigger than twenty six million. And the reason I bring that up is because we're a twenty two million dollar city and our much, much smaller staff is able to do a phenomenal job. And even pushed in a pandemic to lower the taxes or at least keeping the same. I think it's ridiculous what they're doing. Reason I bring that up is for my uh positive. I wanted to thank Mayor and all the council members here. I was running for, um, against Tom Burrows and the GOP and one of the senators actually shot me a message and they blew, or we blew the number down. And I say we because it wasn't me running for office, it was genuine, all of us. I wanted to greatly thank Mayor for not holding it personally that I ran because of last year, even though they got seventy five percent of the vote. Um, I wanted to thank all those people that voted for me this year, uh, because we had, I think, eleven hundred people vote. And fifty five percent of that, and we had thirteen forty three so far votes, uh, underground rated. So just want to thank the general constituency and I really appreciate it, hope you guys show up. If there are anybody has any questions, uh, you know, you can call me, whatever. I can answer any of it. And I'm trying to run a similar campaign, I don't plan on saying here, Tom's twenty four years history, I didn't say anything about Mayor, he did a great job. I'm letting Tom run on his. No, so great, right? Uh, thank you guys. I'll stop that.
I'm going to, yeah. You think I, uh, I mean, uh. There's a tour of the next week's government police department new facility um last week. And I don't know how many people have had to do that. If you have an interest in that, please go, uh, please try and um gang together if you're gonna do that. I've given over, we're not, that we're not finding all the time. But he was very, it's a message to give you a tour and it is coming along phenomenally. It's uh, it's pointing, the impressive parts are the windows, the windows, the hallways and the areas that have been reclaimed. Uh, you, you can start to see where those uh areas will be and how they interact with the beauty and outside and uh looking through the windows. The windows have a completely different feel than what the building does, which is very correct. Um, you also can mention this with me to say, it's something that is uh some iconic, something to be very proud of our, our community. Uh, the police station, looks like it would be done first, um, it's coming right along. They have a bunch of people in there all the time. Uh, the uh. Point of code or the.
Sally board.
Sally board, uh, it's come along in progress, um, and they're working on all that. The next big thing will be a finished trailer for me and I'll be able to see what, you know, how it really looks after the building, but it's, it's all coming around very nicely. That's where I saw the building on the roof and the flat roof. Draw the head side, let's know the back. So this uh water's been initially on this hundred building. Uh. So sorry, uh, so this is. But we may be stay out of it. Another, I'd like to compliment the personal ranking on the uh prison golf uh tournament that they're having or remote championships that they're having here this next weekend. Uh, this is a, a regionally renowned prison golf hotel. Uh, some of the people. With their bodies. So it, it's very, uh, very nice to their golf and their prison golf. Uh, and the new signings look very nice coming up. Uh, also the police department, I just saw on Facebook, I want to say the manager's signing uh for the mask mandate that businesses are able to get and put up as a businesses. Uh, the police department has uh, has their work cut out on, they're primarily uh want to utilize education in the heart of the community with the uh concerns. So if you have anyone that you know of that needs uh additional signs, uh permit to our local mandate, you're welcome to get them in that police department. Other than that, that's next question. We keep.
I know you, you welcome the last time that has been in. It's actually perfect and so.
I haven't seen that. I will, uh, we'll take a look at it tomorrow. It is obviously due to be replaced anyway, so I just want to check and see what, what we're actually dealing with, but yeah. Thank you.